Yes, Mr. Moderator. We're about to go into Article Four. Article Four is the Town Operating Budget. What we're going to do over the next few slides is to kind of talk about the budget process. There are hundreds upon hundreds, if not thousands, of hours that go into creating this budget. From many volunteers on every committee in town, to the Finance Committee, to the Capital Outlay Committee, to the Board of Selectmen, to the Department Heads. What you see behind me is the four-step process that's used to develop the operation budget. It starts with some directive from the Board of Selectmen to the Town Administrator as to what the goals and objectives are of the town, followed by the preparation of a preliminary department budget in coordination with all the town departments. Third is the -- it's reviewed by all of the elected officials as to what the draft budget is. They make changes as they see fit based upon public hearings, public comments, and again, this is a long process that starts in September to create the budget you're about to vote on tonight. From there, then it comes to the Finance Committee and then finally to Town Meeting. The next slide is very similar. This is a very similar process with the Capital Outlay Committee. This is in your warrant packet. I'm going to, in the essence of time, I'm going to try to skip over some of these slides. They are in your packet if you'd like to review them, and again, it's a four-step process. The next slide we have is -- this is a slide that demonstrates what our state aid is coming into the town. On the left, numbers in the vertical column demonstrates what our total net state aid is every year. So our net state aid over the last three years, but for this year, has been going up slightly for what our total state aid number was. However, what has been dropping is the net educational state aid, which is the red line. As you can see, this is the fourth year in a row that that line has dropped. This is something that the town has to balance so we can continue to educate the children in our community the way we are. The point of this slide is to demonstrate that we're not getting any additional state money to support our education program in Carver, Massachusetts. There are many reasons for that. I'm not going to go into that right now, but those are the numbers. That's what happens. So what that means is that we, as a town, have to figure out how to fund our budget and support the programs without the reliance on state aid. What we do is tied into our financial policies is there's a 10-year revenue projection and major cost items. And that's what this slide actually shows. Again, it's in your packet. It's online. They're in all our committee meetings that we have in town. I apologize if you can't read the print here, but again, I just want to call your attention to it. This is the forecast that's used so that the town can live within its forecast, its sustainable revenue. From there, this one hopefully is a little bit easier to read. This really looks at what our budget forecast. After we take out our revenue coming into the town, which is in the column on the left, which our total revenue for the town is $40.35 million that comes in from multiple different sources that are listed there. Then out of that, we have fixed expenses that come into $7.2 million, $7.3 million that come out of there. The remaining balance is then split between the town and the school, all of the townwide departments and then the school departments. What that yields is in new money, which is the pie graph. Oh, category by name value. Well, that one didn't print out right. Actually, what that number is, is 29.7 percent or $223,000. For the town side, the school is the 70.3 percent or the $529,000. So that's the new money the school department has this year to run their budget as well as the town, $223,000. As you move forward from there, that is then underneath that, it's split down by those percentages between the school and the town, and it provides what the total school budget is, which is $23 million, and what the town budget is, is a little over $9 million.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Malinowski is going to go over the entire budget, and he did it last year as well, and it took up a real long time. Can we -- is it possible that we could just have, if people had questions about it?
Mr. Moderator, three more slides.
I think it's beneficial to go through them.
So what you see at the bottom of the slide here is in OPED. OPED is Other Post-Employment Benefits that the town's required to pay. Through initiatives with the town, as you can see up on the chart, the town at this point would have owed $62 million. Through initiatives that they have done over the last four years, they brought that number down to $41 million. And again, that's part of their strategic planning they're doing to control the finances. So that really is what the budget numbers look like. What this really means is we get into what's called PEGO, is basically, we have a balanced budget. So if there's any additional services or programs that we want to add, then we have to cut something. So it's either pay for it if you want, or if something has to go in order for that to happen. Again, we have a balanced budget, you know, per the financial policies that have been very well-run. The Board of Selectmen's goals and objectives are incorporated in the budget. Our funding growth for this year is 2.11 percent. Now, that is the new money coming into the school and the town budgets. Again, 2.11 percent. And with that 2.11 percent, we then have to fund the school and the town. And what's important to keep in mind is that health care increases this year for Blue Cross and Blue Shield is 6.25 percent. Harvard Pilgrim is 12 percent. So those larger increases have to be paid out of that 2.11 percent, which means that, you know, it's a very tight budget. It means you're cutting back some limited services here and there in order to make those numbers work, or if we have somebody that we're able to downsize a position, then we're able to do that. However, in this budget, there are no layoffs that are built into this budget. Again, that may be a challenge for future-year budgets, but this one doesn't include that. There are no surpluses, nor any of the contingencies in the budget. It's very tight as it is right now. With that, this next slide just kind of breaks down the percentage of the budget that goes into the different departments in the town by major categories. You've got the school department with 69 percent. You've got the public safety with just under 11 percent, and then all the way down to human services, which is 1.1 percent, which is where a recreation program would fall into. The next slide kind of breaks that down by department, and I think if you start to look at the largest departments in town, obviously, we have the school, followed by the school. We have the Town Hall Health and Retirement piece, which is 7.4 percent, followed by police, which is 6.5 percent. Then after police, the next largest department is Public Works, which is 3.3 percent. So that's kind of a very quick synopsis. I'm trying to move through this quickly, just in essence of time tonight, to kind of give you a state of the position of the town. Now, this is the start of Article Four, which is broken down into four different parts, Parts A, B, C, and D. And if I could, Mr. Moderator, can I have a motion just on Article Four? And then I need Scott Neef to come up for a few minutes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as presented in the Town Warrant. Under proposed motion.
Motion to be made and seconded to move the motion as presented in the warrant for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, so what we have here is Part A of the article is the Townwide Organizational Plan, Wage and Salary Plan, and Wage and Classification Plan. Those are Appendixes A, B, and C. Those are in your packet, in the back of the packet that puts together the organizational chart. From there, Part B is the Operation Budget, and that is broken down into the town piece, and then we get into the school piece in a later section as to what those numbers are. What I'd like to do is to have the school superintendent just briefly talk about some of the consolidations that we've been working between the school and the town with over the last year or two to figure out how we can get more services out of the staff we have. There have been some consolidations that have occurred with the Townwide IT Department, and then also some consolidations with creating a Townwide Facilities, what's called Operation Maintenance Department, which was the School Facilities Department, the Town Facilities Department, and the DPW that have been combined into one.
So I can address a couple of those. On the, I believe it was actually a couple of slides that go along with the consolidation.
Yep, there we go.
So we had the town, so we were working together with two departments, one in technology and one in facilities. And again, the idea of being reformed, I'd be really reformed as well. Overall, the IT consolidation has really been successful. I think it's been positive for both the town and the school. It's increased our level of service. And there's a list up here. I'm not going to review the list of things that are covered, especially on two slides, so we can just scroll through those two slides pretty quickly. But ultimately, I think the last call is the key one. The areas of the more robust vision IT department and the stronger technology infrastructure. And part of that kind of goes to the person that we've hired as the Technology Director. His name is Steven Mahoney. Steven was unable to be here this evening, but his level of expertise and his work he's done in terms of analyzing systems, both within the school system and within the town, and how we can better integrate those systems has really been impressive. And we, I see the IT consolidation has been tremendous positive for the school district. And I thought it's obviously directly involved in the day-to-day operations on the town side, but from my knowledge and what we've done solely from the town side, I think there's been a real positive there as well. And there's going to be, there's a lot of good movement that's going to happen, even through, you know, integrating systems. We're going to increase our bandwidth throughout the town. We're going to have one gate service through a five-room that's going to connect all town to the units. Except, I think, maybe fire station, the G, in fact, I don't think, maybe Fire, yeah, Fire Station Two and Fire One will be on that. And so we're going to have a boost speed, we're going to have improved access to broadband and some support. What this town has supported through, we've gone into a one-to-one model with home books in the high school. Really, those home books, those devices need a level of technology support in terms of infrastructure, and we've been able to improve that infrastructure. So Steven is the person we've chosen for leading this movement, who's really a talented person, and I think we're, I can't explain how successful that has been. On the facilities side, we've begun to use school to across all town offices, including school departments. We've begun to use uniform mechanical operation systems. So in all the new facilities, we have new boilers in the middle high school. Those boilers, the most of the boilers that are going, the new boiler system that's going into the elementary school, tied to the facilities they use at the fire station. So through Dave Sigatoff's initiative, which is also good understanding, Dave has done a great job in terms of looking at having uniformity in terms of mechanics and operational systems. And I do think long-term, we'll see a benefit from that. I don't think the benefit from that is as immediate, that necessarily we'll see with technology, but I think long-term, when we look at those operational systems throughout the town, it makes sense that we have some compatibility and make sure the systems are very similar. And maybe lower for me the new water system at the middle high school, that's a plus that we could have involved in. But that one, it's, it's what is in the new elementary school, it's what is Town Hall. And again, I think there's a value to having that all done the same way. We also have begun to consolidate some equipment. There's been some redundancy of equipment at the school side and the town side. So Dave's been able to look at some of those pieces of equipment and say, both the school and DPW will need a piece of new equipment next. And we can have one new piece of equipment that's going to be able to manage these up to town. And again, I would, just talking about Dave's level of expertise in terms of bringing those products together. So really, I think technology has been a major success. I think it was a valuable thing for both the school and the town to integrate those projects. And then on the facilities side, I think that we're moving in the right direction in terms of bringing some of these operations and capital systems in the same kind of oversight and effort.
And if I could just add to that, I think just one point I want to bring up to everyone's attention, is we have some great people working for those departments, as the superintendent mentioned, for the facilities department with Dave Sigatoff.
I don't want to put all of it, it's all about the IT. It's the work of everybody, not the job. But I do feel specifically with the addition of Steven Mahoney at the technology side, I do want us to get David's level of expertise in terms of bringing services together. And then obviously, DPW, Town Scodians, everyone's working hard on the rest of the work throughout the town and the school system.
Yep. Let's see, the next slide on that is with Article, this article here that we're on, Article Four, is Part C. So Part B is the town and the school budget. Part C is the enterprise funds. This is the operation portion of the North Carver Water District, which is $274,000. This is the money they bring in through fees to cover their operation. And then finally, Part D is the spending limits that we have with our revolving funds that we're required to vote every year at Town Meeting. So this part is a standard article. We moved it into this article just to some of the government reform actions that have been taken forth in the state, but that's what those programs are, or numbers that were approved last year as well. So with that, Mr. Moderator, what you have on the screen right now should be the proposed motions for Article Four.
The motion has been made and seconded. I didn't get Board of Selectmen vote on this?
Okay, Mr. Moderator. Board of Selectmen, Part A was 4-0-1. Parts B through D was 5-0.
Planning board, Part A.
You mean Finance Committee? I said Planning Board. Oh, yeah, yeah. That's not Planning Board. It should be Finance Committee.
Apparently, this is a type O, it should be Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee voted on Part A, 5-0, to approve. Parts B, C, and D, 6-0, to approve.
And scope made for Parts A through D?
That was actually a 4-0 vote, not a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Bellman.
Mr. Moderator, through you. The Part A on the organizational chart, wage and salaries, on that, it doesn't show what the amount for the contracts or any deal of the different people there. It doesn't include the IT director in this, URC. I could be missing that. But I think for future references, that if you let us know where to fall on the chart of how much they're making, and the reason for that is that we'll have a breakdown of how much the wages are and how much the expenditures are, because we don't know, and we don't even know what they're spending the money on in the budget. So we really can't, as members here, know, are they even leaving a budget here and putting money here? We don't know or whatnot. So not knowing what the salary and the expenditures are and what it's going for, it's just hard for me to make. Money's going to be transferred here, there, and everywhere, whatever you want. And that's what this does, it says, here you go, guys, do whatever you want with the money, and this is what you get.
Mr. Malinowski.
Yes, Mr. Bellman, I think answering your questions in order. The IT director, his budget falls within the school committee, so it's not listed on that wage and salary scale. That's for the town, which is Appendix, I believe it's B and C. The questions that you're asking are on Appendix E, which break out the different departments, and that goes through the budget process. So we have a chart of accounts that is probably about 60 pages long that identifies how this money's broken out. Again, all that's discussed in public session, it's done with the Finance Committee, and I know you've seen those chart of accounts before, because that's where this money goes into those, and it has to follow in that unless it's approved by the Board of Selectmen to be changed.
That's Hewens. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Now, Sarah Hewens, 52 Forest Street. I would like to point out that on Article Four, Part A, on page seven, it says that Hewens does not agree with Part A. That's incorrect. What I actually voted for, and is apparently recorded in this document, but is in the minutes, that I only disagree with the first part of Part A, the Townwide Organizational Chart. However, I am all in favor of wage and salary pay scale and the classification plan were elected to non-rene in 2003. I want to make that very clear. I want our fees to be paid and paid fairly and properly, but I am against the Townwide Organizational Chart.
Mr. Moderator, because Sarah is absolutely right, and I apologize that it wasn't clear in the Town Warrant for you.
Any further discussion on Article Four? If you have a majority vote, all those in favor of Article Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. The House has a voting unanimous. Article Five, Capital Improvements, Improvements Act. Do you get a motion to move?
Okay, Mr. Moderator. It's really fine needs. Proposed motion, I move Part A, the Town Reroute Sin, the amount set forth in Part A of Article Five in the warrant. Parts B. End of the, I, thank you, since I didn't want to read all this. I amend my, change my motion. I move that we approve the article as written in the warrant under the proposed motions.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we consider each part, Parts A, B, C, and D, as separate items.
Second. Motion to be made and seconded to consider Parts A, B, C, and D as separate items?
Yes, my rationale for doing that is we have some fairly thick-ticket items here that I really think that the body should have a chance to fully discuss and vet before voting on it.
Turning discussion to break into Part A, B, C, and D.
Mr. Moderator, I actually wrote out that I'd like it all broken up as individual instead. Would you like to change that motion and have all of them done individually as votes?
All of what, Mr. Bellman?
All of what? All of A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K.
In this, in this Article Five, Article Five only has four parts. Oh, you're talking down in Part B. No, that's not part of my motion.
It's not part of your motion.
No.
Motion to be made and seconded to take Parts A, B, C, and D separately. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. The House has.
Mr. Moderator, on Part A, up on the screen behind you, this is basically eliminating a credit card. I use that as a metaphor to what this is. Back in previous years, in a Town Meeting in 2006, the town appropriate money to buy land for the North Carver Water District, as well as some coal property land, as part of that authorization, which was, I believe, over $7 million, there still is $655,000 that has not been spent. As a result of that, that basically appears as a credit card limit on our finances. We have no intention of spending the $655,000, even though Town Meeting has authorized it. Therefore, what this article requests is for Town Meeting to rescind that authorization and, in essence, eliminate that credit card limit. The second piece is the $30,000, which was for the fire engine repair. I believe I mentioned that earlier in the evening. It ties into the one local, the one engine that could not, it was a rehab of an engine that couldn't stay within the bond. So that's why we had to have $30,000 reallocated for that. So that's the description for Part A, and I'm just going to go through one section at a time, so if we want to have any other discussion on that.
Any other discussion on Part A? Seeing that we're going to the likes, all those in favor of Part A as presented in the article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. The House has a voting unanimously.
Part B, Part B goes into first talking about, at the bottom of the slide in front of you, you see some money being rescinded. This is some items that were previously approved at Town Meeting, and again, when Town Meeting doesn't, we don't fully spend the money, because we always try to come in on budget, this is a way that we actually come back and put it back into the Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund. So these are items that came in either underbid, or we were able to do it cheaper than originally anticipated, once we got into the full design of the projects. So that's what's been the bulk of the center part of the paragraph. In addition to that, the allocation that's requested this year out of the Capital and Debt Stabilization is $3.3 million. Now, I'm going to go to the next slide that kind of highlights, again, this is in your packet. On the right side is what the 10-year capital plan is, that shows what items in there are being paid for out of cash versus what are bonded, and how all the needs of the town are being addressed so that they're programmed when the useful life of some equipment comes up so that it can be replaced, similar to the example that I gave earlier this evening with the roof. With that, just a couple of things here. As part of our financial management policies is that we're trying to get to a point where we have 10 percent of our revenue that can be invested back into our capital. Again, it goes back to the roof issues. We have to invest back into our assets, otherwise they deteriorate and they become twice as expensive to repair. Right now, we're at 7.4 percent of that 10 percent target, so we're making great progress over the last couple of years to grow that, as tied into our financial policies. You know, tied into this is also, it's a Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund. So what's proposed right now is we would have $953,000 paid for one of the bonds we have, and with Town Meeting's approval to move forward, we'd be looking at another $819,000 for a second bond to fund the, to fund the police station and also the repairs to the library for the ventilation. We currently still have some legacy leases that account for $121,000, and then the major item that we have is $175,000 for an end loader. So let me kind of go through these items, and then after I go through those, I'd like to ask the Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee, who spent numerous meetings with him and his committee going through and meeting with all the departments and understanding all of these pieces of equipment in greater detail. So briefly, what we have is a replacement of the front end loader. This has been on our dock, and we keep pushing out year after year because our public works is able to get another year out of it, another year out of it, another year out of it, well, we ran out of years. So this is the time we need to move forward with purchasing a new one. And again, all of these items are within our budget process, and none of these require any additional funding from the town. The second item is ceiling tiles in the corridor in the lobby of the middle high school, and that $75,000 is going to allow Dave Sigatoff and John Woods to go forward and purchase those items and then have their own labor install those. In essence, we've just replaced the roof of the middle high school. Any of you that have been in there, when you go in there, you saw a bunch of stained tiles. Most of those have been removed, so you actually saw a ridge with no tiles in them. Now that we've repaired the roof, now it's time to replace the ceiling tiles that are in there. We have the replacement of the exterior siding on Town Hall. There has been some water damage, and the material has failed, at least at the lower sections, and we were originally looking to repaint and patch it, but it looks like we're going to have to remove many of the hardy board planks that are there and replace those. And this is going to be tied in with some previous money approved by Town Meeting. Next item is utility vehicle for the middle high school for $35,000. This is going to be for the Fields Athletic Program. We have one new, I'm sorry, this is for police, Item E is for police and fire equipment. We've just, we're in the process, we're going to have to be hiring some new police officers due to retirement and some vacancies on the department, as well as with the fire department, we've added some new personnel. And as I've been told is, they hire the best people, and they try to reuse the uniforms, but sometimes they don't hire by size. There's times where we need new bulletproof vests, and there's times where we need new turnout gear, and that's what this number allows us to do. It's also something we've done in the last two Town Meetings. The police have asked for some additional speed signs, and they also want to purchase a used motorcycle, and our police chief has had some tremendous success buying used equipment out of other departments that are, that have a lot more funding than Carver does, that after two or three years, they just go through a cycle of buying new. So we buy their three- or four-year-old piece of equipment off at them at 30 cents on the dollar, and we do pretty well with that, and the chief is very frugal in that fashion. From there, we have one police cruiser replacement. Then as Superintendent Neef mentioned, was the Townwide Technology Upgrades, maintaining, you know, maintaining your networks and your computers and all of your systems in towns, it's an infrastructure piece. It's just like maintaining the roads when you piece, it's just like maintaining the roads, when you have to plow the roads, or you have to go patch the roads. Our IT system is a network, and it requires constant upgrade, but because we have combined it for the town and school, we're able to be more efficient, and this, this comes out of one, one, one pot of money, if you will. Next item is the capital reserve account, um, this was initially approved in two thousand and fourteen, uh, by Town Meeting in Article Ten. This allows the savings that the Capital Outlay Committee, uh, does, just like we talked about in the previous slide, to allow them to put that into a fund that if there's an emergency mid-year, they have funds to go out and repair any major type of capital improvements, and to purchase and participate in any other necessary items, uh, in between our annual town meetings. Uh, and, and this, this just feeds into that fund that they have to vote, uh, along with the Finance Committee to remove. Uh, we have a replacement of a new, uh, seventy-one passenger bus, uh, we have some school cafeteria equipment. Um, Item L is the annual reduction in debt exclusion for the new elementary school. This is a recurring item, we have to budget this item, this is from a solo revenue coming in, but we have to put it into the Capital Outlay Committee, in, in, uh, the capital and debt outlet, uh, stabilization fund, so that it can pay off part of the bond, so we don't have to use that money to tax the taxpayers. As part of the agreement of how we were able to save, I believe it's about sixty percent of what was authorized by Town Meeting when we built the elementary school, uh, and this is one of those, those areas. And then finally, the last item is the two million dollars for the debt service lease payments, interest, project management disclosure statements, townwide capital network implementation and oversight, and tw- townwide maintenance, uh, contract for two million dollars, which gets us to the total of the three point three million dollars that I had on the previous slide. So that, that is Part B of the Capital Outlay, if I could ask, um, Jack Angley to, to make some comments, um, on behalf of this committee.
I guess, what can I say? You've covered it all, Michael. But, um, in, uh, just summing up some of the things that, that we do and have done, I was talking to Steve Pratt before the meeting, we've come a hell of a long way in the last twenty years. It was, uh, you know, whatever was left, that was the capital equipment budget, if we could afford it, we got it. But then we got smart, and we started figuring, well, you know, we've got some duties to maintain the equipment and do the sort of work that the town expects us to do. So anyway, things have all changed, and I must say that, uh, Michael has certainly in the last, how long you been here, Michael? Four, five years? Has certainly, uh, managed to money well, and come up with some creating, creative financing, things that we never did before. This capital, uh, not stabilization, but capital improvement plan, uh, allows us to tuck some money in there, and if we need, we can take it out. We couldn't do that years ago. Every single penny had to be voted here, and, uh, if we felt sure, oh, we felt sure. The, uh, I can assure you that we work very closely with the department heads, uh, I, I must say, even without us, they're so disciplined that they were, we're not really watchdogs, we just sort of support what they do. Uh, Michael mentioned that, uh, that Chief Dupley, uh, creatively has gone out to towns richer than we are, and has picked up some of the lightly-used cruisers and stuff that, uh, that we're using today. Uh, the Department of Public Works, uh, have maintained the equipment, you know, they're washing it all the time, some of, we used to say with the fire department, they're their own worst enemies, this stuff looks so damn good that, uh, you know, what do, what do we need another truck for? But the, uh, the, uh, public works vehicles are well-maintained now, they, uh, he referenced the, uh, the, what is that, John Deere, uh, five, five fifty-four loader, that thing has come up so many years, but they just keep working, keep taking care of it, servicing it. So these are kind of things that, uh, that I'm just so proud to work with these folks on, uh, I don't know, I guess, uh, that's pretty much where, I, I think, anything, Michael? But, uh...
No, I, I think, you know, as you mentioned, the department heads do a tremendous job, uh, John Linton and Chris Vincent with the DPW and their team and mechanics, as well as folks on the school committee, I mean, the school, uh, maintenance facilities, um, and I guess the point that I, I wanna make here is that, you know, we have a plan, it's a ten-year plan, that we prioritize what the needs are for those ten years, but then we do a look ahead every year to figure out, how do we best spend the money to make sure we can maintain everything? And as you saw on the previous slide, uh, you know, when we start this slide off, is we return money that we don't spend. So that money gets put right back into the program, so that we can keep on maintaining the infrastructure. So we're very frugal in everything that we, we do, um, sometimes people don't like that I'm too frugal, but the fact of the matter is, we have limited resources, and we manage them well, and, uh, we try to get the best value of our equipment and our people, and, um, this is what Part B of our, um, capital improvement plan is.
That, that slide that's up right now, I think that speaks to, uh, the philosophy of, of how it, how it works. You know, it's, you put it up to buy it next year, well, we don't need to, all of a sudden, it was, it didn't have to. Well, so we move it out another year, move it out another year, so these are expenses that, that we don't have to incur, uh, until absolutely necessary. So it's just, it's just good management, as far as I'm concerned, so. I would certainly wanna thank all the department heads and, uh, people that we, we're pleased, that we're privileged to work with. Any questions? I could answer, maybe, if you have, if not...
Any further discussion on Part B? Mr. Moderator?
Uh, just a couple of questions. On the exterior siding, we, we spent forty thousand last year of paint, but wasn't done. It's hardy, the hardy, uh, siding, wasn't that having a fifty light screen or something?
Well, there's a problem with that, uh, the, it's a, it's a heck of a tough, boy was a builder for many years, you just had to drill holes in the damn stuff to put it up, it was so tough. Problem is that it, that it moves, and when you get joints in, at the, where the, where the butts meet, water gets in there, and though it is hard on the outside, the inside is still a synthetic material, it sucks up the water, and it begins to break down. So if you go closely to the Town Hall, you'll see all these big spaces, not aesthetically that they are that bad, but they're allowing moisture to get in, and that's the problem with the hard work. There's no free lunch, it's a great product, but it, it really is, uh, reaches its limit. That's...
And I don't see anything here of the concern aging buildings for maintenance or anything else, um, is there?
That's not, that's not the scope here.
Yeah. But it's an improvement, it's capital improvement, the, there's nothing in there for me.
And you should probably be discussing with that with Capital Outlet Committee supposed to the town meeting. Is there any further discussion on, on Part B? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it so voting unanimously. Mr. Moderator?
If I could, uh, we, we're gonna have just a quick presentation from the School Building Committee, and if I could have, uh, Dick Ward come up, uh, to start this.
You surprised me.
We're gonna, we're gonna do that.
I will be brief, uh, my name's Dick Ward, Twenty West Street, I am your chairperson of your elementary school building. Okay? Uh, please smile, guys. Anyway, uh, I wanted to, uh, just touch upon a couple of things, and then I wanted to introduce you to our project manager, uh, lead person, and, uh, he can explain a little more about where we're at on the school quickly. Uh, we have eleven people on the School Building Committee, there is a School Technology Committee that meets several people that are on the building committee, are also on that, and they meet every Thursday with the architects, project managers, and the construction, uh, company. So, uh, they are, are on top of everything, the project managers, and this has come from several different people, so I'm repeating it. Uh, Chad and his crew, uh, have done an outstanding job, there are three people there every day overseeing every single small step, and there's a whole bunch of small contractors, you know, that have to be working on that building. Anyway, um, the only two things I wanted to touch on was, June ninth, and you may have seen a brochure or something on it, that's, uh, on farewell. Uh, if you, uh, went to school there, your kids went to school there, I started my first year teaching in, in, in September nineteen sixty-four, I, I taught for a year in God, and then I went to do this, so I'm going to the hall on farewell and say goodbye to that classroom. Um, you, the school itself, uh, we've had the chance to, to go through at different intervals, the building committee. Uh, I know people think it looks more than everything else, but vote for it. The, this school is kid-friendly. The rooms, the ceilings are slanted so that they get more light, though there are windows on the whole wall, the windows open, okay? Um, the corridors, uh, the upstairs corridors are learning corridor with various small learning centers all along it. Uh, if, and Chad, I don't know if he can give you a date yet, but, uh, the kids are going in in September, but there will be an open house last week in August. So let me introduce, uh, ask the town moderator if you can hear our project manager Chad Pritten, uh, for a minute.
Chad's not a resident of the town, so, plus his objection, we have a lot of his speak. You have the call.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you, Dick, uh, appreciate the opportunity to present to you folks, it's certainly been a, uh, a very fun project to be involved with, and, uh, wanted to get through the building, a couple photos that we have, just taken in this past week, and give you a quick update on the schedule and budget. Um, so what you see here is a typical classroom, there are thirty-two of those classrooms identical to this one, uh, this is a grade one through five classroom, in addition to that, there are nine pre-k and kindergarten spaces, and then of course you have your art spaces, music spaces, special education spaces, uh, everything sized in accordance with TESI standards, MSBA standards. Uh, next photo here, we have the gymnasium, so you can see the wood floor, which is currently being crackbilled, uh, to acclimate, uh, they're gonna be installing that in the next week, uh, so very nice, bright, high space, it does have a regulation-sized basketball court, and it has two proscords.
And it has a maple floor.
Uh, so this photo is showing you two of the water gathering spaces that we have, these gathering spaces are on each level, uh, they're sized appropriately to house an entire grade of students, uh, they are fully equipped with, uh, protectors, screens, and local audio system, uh, there are a couple other smaller break-up spaces, we'll show you in a moment. Uh, so a few of the common areas there on the left side, you see the, uh, multipurpose room, uh, cafeteria, so the cafeteria actually has an oval partition that runs, uh, cuts it into about two-thirds, one-third, so the one-third side is where the platform is, uh, so you can actually have two different events or, uh, spaces happening at the same time. On the top right corner, uh, that's what we're calling the book collection, so modern schools don't have traditional libraries, they really have a place to house the books, there's, they may have, uh, park less books than there have been traditionally, uh, for a while media centers were big, but now people have to really sort of go and away. Uh, the bottom right corner is a project area, um, so there's one of those at each grade level, and, and that's really where the space in the library is broken up, the MSBA allocates a certain space, so how we use that space to adapt to educational program is totally up to the district, that's one of the ways that it's accomplished here. Uh, so last couple photos, the second room to the left side, you see, uh, a total of the courtyard, so, um, concrete there's being poured, uh, it's really a nice outdoor learning environment. Um, on the right side there, you see some of the play structures, which just started going in a few days ago, uh, there are a total of five different play areas, uh, there's a basketball court, there's six U-ten, roughly-sized soccer fields, and two softball fields, lots of recreation space. All right, and lastly, uh, on the very top, you see the timeline of project completion, so we're calling project completion November thirty, that's the final completion date of all the second room to the left. The building is also scheduled to be substantially complete on June twenty-second, we are on target for that date, uh, as you can see by the pictures. One thing that we like to do under the analyzing budgets is look at the percentage of contingency utilized over, uh, nine at the lapse. Uh, you can see that we're roughly seventy quicker towards the way through the project time wise, uh, we only use about one quarter of the construction density, and none of the softball, which is, uh, great news. And that's in addition to the bid savings, uh, that was initially received of twelve grand and a half million dollars, we're very, very good shape on the schedule and budget. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be part of this project.
Okay, moving on to Part C. Um, your motion on Part C?
Um, I move that we approve, uh, Part C at the break.
First lady and second, uh, uh, Mr. Ossen?
Yes, uh, Part C is for the library HVAC system and upgrade and social repairs to the building for the HVAC system. Um, one of the things, when this building was built, um, the HVAC system has a twenty-year useful life, we're at that twenty-year, um, portion of its useful life. What the challenge is with this, and why this number is unfortunately larger than we want it to be, is the current plan that was put together to, uh, replace these units would require cutting five different holes in the roof with a crane to lift the HVAC units out, put a new HVAC unit in, in the hole, and then repair the roof. For those that have a construction background, um, you never wanna open up a roof and cut the sheathing, you could avoid it, uh, because you're always gonna run into a repair, uh, so that's one of the challenges with this piece. With Dave Sigintoff and John Woods, they're going to, you know, do as much value engineering as they can to reduce this number, uh, but we don't wanna be in a position where these units collapse and, and are crashed, and we're no longer able to, to maintain the heating and the cooling in the building. Uh, again, we are gonna look at more innovative ways of doing this, but this is what the current budget is, and, uh, we need to, to move forward with upgrading these repairs.
Yes, ma'am. Lady, may I? Yes, I'd like to talk about the HVAC system. I heard, it was my understanding that it was supposed to be on the two thousand and twenty-three capital improvement budget, and what happened to escalate that to now, and making that, making that critical? And the second part of my question would be, there is, there was a request in two thousand and sixteen... and sixteen to replace the HVAC at the Apple House COA Center, and I'm curious to see what happened to that. We all can figure out that that is probably at the end of its lifetime, that's for certain. It doesn't work now and hasn't been several years. So I'd like to know what brought one more, what made one more important than the other, and where is, where is the repair situation for the HVAC at the Apple House?
I can speak to regarding the library. That was moved up for this fall through the software that Mr. Neef spoke about. We purchased the program for that handles our maintenance and our capital planning, projected out for next twenty years. And through their assessment, they have been that the library was one of the critical areas that needs replacement. So that was moved up. That's the reason that the Apple House, we are going to be reevaluating now that that project did not move forward. So that will have to be evaluated and built into the program.
Can you explain that to me?
That'll have to be reviewed by the Capitol Outlay Committee.
Is it on schedule to be reviewed?
Can you? It's on schedule to be reviewed, yes.
Is it on, is it on schedule to be reviewed?
That is correct.
Okay, when we have to take a listen.
Again, this is something for the next year for the Capitol Outlay Committee to relook at all capital projects in the town.
So two thousand and eighteen is certainly out of the question then? Two thousand and eighteen is certainly out of the question?
It's not in the, it's not in the article.
So now we have, okay, so we're looking at the very minimum, two thousand and nineteen, but we have the library's owed here for a million dollars, might drive that right?
That's right.
Thank you.
Justin, yeah? We're better for words, we're down.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have mics down here, so we're all just going to have a few mics listening. Moving forward with part C. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Who is the caller?
He's very loudly. So I have a question to this woman's concern. Does the Apple House not have air conditioning right now or heat?
The, the Apple House, it's not in the scope, but I will answer the question. The Apple House does have heat, does have air condition. We did have some wall units put in last year. It worked fine last year according to the director, so it does have full heat, full air condition. So it does.
Okay, that's the question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, see, no further movement of the mics. The tape from now they got part C, all those people, part C, sixty-five mics standing, aye? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Sorry, tell us the report here. All those people with their cards in the air, please?
Who am I and why am I voting? You already voted. I'll be just holding on to cash.
Oh, we got a chance to vote, we're getting shot.
Tell me what, tell me what you want, where you want me to go.
I can hear an immigration.
Vote is one eighty-one, one eighty-one to thirty-nine. The motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move we approve part D and written to the board.
Motion to the eighty-second to approve of part D. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Been a lot of study that's been done over the years on advancing some of the town's infrastructure, whether that was the new elementary school, whether that's the repairs on the middle high school roof, doors, and windows, whether that's building a new fire station central command, or whether that's building a new police station. All of those studies started initially looking at a combined facility. It was determined to then separate the facilities. It was then determined at one point or another to go back and look at renovating the existing fire station complex and turning that into a police station facility. One of the challenges that whether Dave Segatoff or anybody from our building committee can tell you is that today's age, trying to renovate an existing building and try to, to upgrade that is very challenging and costly for a governmental body to do. We're somewhat plagued by chapter one forty-nine, which are the construction rules that increase costs, sometimes up to forty percent. Case in point is the elementary school, when it was supposed to be a renovation rehab, was sixty-seven million dollars. We ended up building the building for forty-nine million dollars, for a complete new building. And I just use that as a comparison. So with that, one of the things that was looked at, that town meeting approved at a previous town meeting, was to go forward and do a long-range strategic plan and needs analysis for the, the police station. This is something that our police chief Doofly has been wanting to do. He's had his ideas on how we wanted to grow the department to satisfy the needs of the town and to meet the growing needs and ever-changing public safety issues. With that, that money, we approved, town meeting approved sixty-five thousand dollars. I believe we spent fifteen thousand of that. We don't spend money unless we actually have to, as we've demonstrated in our capital plan. That report took a little longer than we anticipated, but it was completed this winter and was presented in an open public session to the Board of Selectmen. As part of that study, all of the police and dispatch personnel commented on a survey as to what they thought some of the issues were, and the consulting team actually went forward and looked at best practices around the country and tried to analyze some of the items for the, the town of Carver. And Chief Doofly will get up in a minute and speak to that and speak to his long-term vision. What I want to speak to right now is a space needs and also funding mechanism as to how we're looking to move this project forward. In the study that was done on the, on the left side of the graph up there, it kind of itemizes the, the standard rooms that are out there in a typical police station, and it puts a per-square-footage cost into that with a contingency. That number is a base number, and again, I want to use the word base number, came in at around ten thousand square feet. It's probably going to be a larger building than ten thousand square feet that we're going to need, whether that's an eleven thousand square foot building or a twelve thousand square foot building. With that, also in the report on pages, I think it was six, seven, eight, nine, it identified all the different rooms that are in there, basically a development program. When we go forward and hire the OPM and the architect, and we're going to spend probably close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an OPM and an architect for this project, they will take that development program and start to put that into plans to lay out what the actual square footage needs to be to satisfy the chiefs and the strategic plan for the department. And whether that's a ten thousand square foot building, an eleven thousand square foot building, a twelve thousand square foot building, or something even different, is that's the study that that'll go through. That's the same process that we've used for both the elementary school and for the fire station, is when we hire the OPM and the project managers, we go through them and start to develop a plan. And, and that's, that's our next step that we're doing. We're going to have Bill Harriman, who's the chairman of the committee, come up after Chief Doofly and talk about the next steps of the, the committee. But on the top right, what I want to address is that, you know, if you had a ten thousand square foot building, and right now, based upon information we've received from OPMs, you're looking at about four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build a police station. Ten thousand times four fifty gets you to four point five million. If you have an eleven thousand square foot building, then it gets you to four point nine five million dollars. So, you know, that, that's what happens in these studies, is you use a per-square-foot cost based upon what you think the anticipated need is going to be. Now, that falls in line, that four point nine falls in line with what the town can afford to borrow. I want to emphasize, what the town can afford to borrow. And, and in our debt structure, that's about the capacity that we have to move this project forward. Having said that, is that the Capitol Outlay Committee has other funds. You approved those tonight, the five hundred thousand, plus they have some additional funds that they could dedicate to this project if properly justified that they need it. But most importantly, what the Capitol Outlay Committee has said, any additional cost for this, we will pay out of cash. What do I mean by that? You saw our ten, ten-year plan for capital, is that if they have to push some projects out to another year to come up with another half a million or a million dollars to build this building, they will do that. And that will come out of that. It won't be borrowed funds. It'll be cash funds that comes out of our operation budget to get to the number that we need. Again, I have to go back and emphasize that we're Carver. We only have so much revenue coming into the town, and right now, there's no appetite to do a debt exclusion, so we have to live within our means. We're living within our means by borrowing the max we can, a four point nine, and then, you know, using additional funds out of the Capitol Outlay to pay for that. Now, right now, as I mentioned, we had sixty-five thousand dollars that was approved at a previous town meeting. We also had a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that was approved last year for us to go forward and hire our owners' project managers and designers, and we started that process. We're probably going to spend, it's probably going to be about six hundred thousand dollars of the seven fifty is what the final design cost is going to be for this project. And then, so we spent fifteen, so we still have two hundred and forty thousand dollars left. So going into the project, if town meeting approves the four point nine million dollars, it will put us to five point one four million dollars that we can move the project forward with today. Again, there is additional funds that the Capitol Outlay Committee has available that they will put into this project. This is a preliminary budget to move the project forward. I do anticipate that it will cost slightly more than the five point one four million dollars, and we have a plan for that, and it doesn't require additional borrowing. And that plan is going to be based upon what the needs are of, of the town, just like we did with the fire station, just like we did with the school. That's why we have a dedicated building committee that's done this before, that knows the ropes inside and out, and at the end of the day, Chief Doofly is going to get what he needs, and it's going to be within a budget that we can afford. So with that, if I could have Chief Doofly stand up and then Bill Harriman after him?
Is it working?
There you go.
It's working now. So, first of all, before we start, I would imagine that most of the police in the lobby of the police station, I don't want to spend too much time talking about it. Respect the fact you've been here a long time and I don't want to waste any of this time, but I did write some notes, that's okay. They may be a little redundant as to what Mr. Maloski said, but I think it's worth it. So with that, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak here at the future of McCalla Police Department. It's truly an honor and a pleasure to be a police chief, and I want to take a minute to express my thanks to the men and women of McCalla Police Department for all they do each and every day to ensure us, we truly have an extraordinary. While I would match, while our office is against any McCalla, we can always find ways to improve the delivery of police service. Recently, we commissioned a study, acquired by a company called Public Leadership Resources Corporation, that Mr. Lawson has referenced. The study was designed to establish a strategic plan, the future of our police force. The results of this study were presented to the Board of Selectmen, and identified many areas where we are excelled, as well as some ideas for improvement. The study looked at staffing numbers, organizational structure, community satisfaction, and occupancy of the facility. Factors such as population growth, number of calls for service, as well as expectations of the levels of service, were used to predict future staffing needs. This combines with a change in our command structure and the addition of an improved investigative ability to allow our police department personnel to better serve the numbers of officers. As mentioned, one of the issues that MRI looked at was the physical police facility. MRI reaffirmed past studies that have been done of the police station dating back as far as two thousand and five. The police facility is a failing facility and is in need of replacement. Starting with the current building size to its uninviting appearance, all the way to serious safety concerns around the processing of prisoners and the cramped environment that fights problems. The facility is inadequate for the needs of an autumn police department. It is forty years old and shows us the age of its age. To quote MRI, "It is difficult to avoid anything possible without the existing police I could go on for quite some time speaking to the building's deficiencies, but I believe most of you are already aware of many of them. The problems have been the subject of several studies and reports from Sparkback's two thousand five. I have worked in the building since two thousand and two, and I can tell you that the reports are true and the need for replacement is valid. I will be happy to address any questions as to current issues in the building in a few minutes. As part of past studies, we planned to replace the central fire station as well as the police station was put into place. That plan was recreated before I could achieve. In that plan, follow the building of a fire station first and once complete, the building with a police station. With the fire station complete, I give the void night hopes of moving forward with the plan of creating a police station. The MRI report helps to create a to vet all ideas for the station, work with the design and the mobility for it, that fits the needs of the Carver Police Station, the town, and its residents, now and into the future. And to do so, it is responsible again. In addition, we have created an internal voting committee comprised of police officers and dispatchers, who are assisting the formal voting committee by providing police-specific information as to what we need in our police facility. I am very confident with the members of both these committees, that this team will create a plan for a new police facility that will fit the needs of the government and the town, while respecting the need to do so in the end of the I am hopeful that you, citizens of Carver, people whom we are all ultimately responsible, will approve this article and move this project forward. I give you my word, which is all I have, that not $1 of your money really spent, that does not need to be spent to satisfy the police facility. Thank you for your time, and I certainly hope to have you in the
Terrific job, chief. Very good job on that. My name is Bill Harriman. I'm the chairman of the Carver Police Station Advisory Building Committee. I've been on a couple of committees so far. I was on the fire station committee, the school committee, along with some other folks. So I want to talk about those people. The chief introduced them, but I want to go one more time through that group. My building committee is Chief Dufule, and Officer Brian Barault, who was a Carver police officer. They offer the expertise in their end. I don't know anything about a police station. I've tried to stay out of them all my life. But they have the expertise of what they need to tell this committee about. And we've already learned a lot about a police department, so that's been helpful to us. Also on that committee is Dave Robinson. He brings to the team a lot of things, particularly the fact he's been in Carver for so long, all his life, knows the town, knows the people, has credibility, he has everything we need on that committee. And he already has shown his colors to us. Also on that committee, Michael Malowski, David Seidenthal, John Delius Coley, and myself. Those four, we have been on two other committees. We served on the fire station building committee, brought that to fruition. All indications, we did a fairly good job on that, we're very happy with that. We were also working with the school department on the elementary school, and the four of us sitting on every meeting. The four of us have been to, over the last five years, probably, I don't know how many hundred, construction meetings just to sit and listen. But that was all a learning process for us. So now, I think we're headed to a police station. And I think we have all the attributes we need to do that. So currently, where we are, is we're up to bid on an owners' project manager. Chad Steen didn't bid on it, unfortunately, it's too small for them, apparently. They've been terrific. But we have 10 applicants we're evaluating right now. We're looking at reviewing applicants, scoring them. Thursday morning, my team will sit down and evaluate those applicants, and three or four to interview for the project manager team. Once they're on board, we have a lot of work to do. And I've told the team this already, we need to get a designer on board. That'll be our next big hurdle. So we will hopefully on May 18th, I think is the date we picked, to appoint the project manager team, then we'll start working on an architect. Okay? We already got the money in the plans for the owners' project manager. And that will be done. So, one of the charges I will make to this owners' project manager team when they come on board is, read the four studies. There have been four studies done over the last 15 years, and my charge to them, I've already asked them to in the RFP, but they will be strongly encouraged to read those studies and commit with a proposal. Do we need to do another feasibility study? I don't think so. There's enough information in there to cover that. So they with us will start to develop the plan for the future, a site, something we need to talk to once they come on board. We will visit other police departments to get ideas about what we want in our police station. The designer will start to draw a set of plans, will deliver plans and a cost estimate, so that we will know, have an idea of what we want, what that's going to cost. Obviously, we will do value engineering, because they will come in, architects like to build big, grand monuments, I guess to themselves, I don't know. But we will have to cut that down, riddle that down, and get it down to a base number, which we did with the fire station, we did with the elementary school. So that will all be done, we will come up with a final number, the final plan. When those plans are done, they will be available for public viewing. I would hold a public forum, although I'm a little gun-shy about doing that right now, but I think that's a good idea, have people come in and talk about it, look at it, see what they think. Everything we do is posted on the website, Town and Carver website. So this project, as I think we all know, I mean, when you say, "Do we need a police station?" Well, I can answer that two in one note. Yes, we do, very, very badly. So with that, I would ask you for your vote tonight. My team is eagerly anticipating your response tonight, and the ability to get moved on this thing and get it done. And this will put, I think, our town infrastructure in a really, really good place once this is completed. So, we'll take any questions, if anybody has any.
We got Jack Angley?
Yeah, to you, Mr. Moderator. Just to make sure that Mr. Harriman's enthusiasm comes full cycle and we do end up getting the police station that we deserve, the Capital Outlay Committee has a capital reserve fund. And it's in moments like this that it could, it could really help make this come along, lest there be, should there be a snag or something coming forward. We have $500,000 that can be released to make sure this thing comes in on time. Not that it should be spent, but it's just, it's there. So, nobody's heartbroken when, "Ah, we can't do it." Well, we can do it, and we've got it. So, anyway, I just want to make sure people understood that.
And just one final comment, this project is designed to be built within the town's current structure. So again, we're not asking for any type of debt exclusion or override going to the town. This fits within our financial policies to build this building.
Mr. Shea? Hi, yes, Chris, Mr. Shea, 48th and 11th Street. Let me start by saying, thank you, Chief Dufule. And did I support the new police station? We're desperate, need a bit, they need a facility, as anybody that's seen their facilities understands, they're certainly falling apart. My discussion comments has more to do with the process, the fact that we voted $190,000 last year, or a year ago, for preliminary designs for the station, the fact that we don't have the full scale of the numbers, we don't have preliminary designs, and frankly, the process hadn't started two months ago, seems to be a little bit late coming out of the gate. I think going forward from here, it should be a more open process, it should be started immediately, when available to start, and we shouldn't be voting on questions that we, issues that have not been fully presented to us as a public. Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
I was reading on past data information, it was like $7 million for the cost of a new police station years and years ago, that was brought forward. Right, that was a number of years ago, now this is only maybe $5 million possibly. We don't have a hard figure here, and I understand this possibility of using money from Capital Lightway, or going against what we're doing for our capital outlay, other projects that need to be done. I think maybe we need more money for this, if you do come back, for this to be done right. I don't want to turn around and say, "Well, this is all we're going to spend, and we really do need this, and this, and this, for a police station." So, the money issue is a big issue, it's a lot of money, and on the levy limit, great, but I want them to have what they want, I want them to have what they need. So, I just wonder, like I said, the board of $7 million, and we're talking nothing goes down in price, always goes up. So I'm just, I don't want to get short-changed.
If I could just address very briefly on that, you're absolutely right. The Chief Dufule and the team, as has been directed by the selectmen, the Capital Outlay Committee, and the Finance Committee, they'll get what they need to build the project. I don't think there's any question that people aren't going to support them. The numbers that you're quoting, I briefly mentioned those before, that was for a renovation rehab project on an existing facility, that's why those numbers were so skewed. So again, we're looking at new construction. I'll go back to the example I gave for the elementary school, a renovation rehab was $67 million. We built the new building for $49 million. It's the same ratio that you're talking about with new construction, by not having to go through Chapter 149.
Mr. Pratt?
Street Pratt, 16th and Western Street. I had the same question, Mr. Malowski, and, you know, we looked at this when we were at the Town Building Study Committee back in 2010, and we then relooked at it again in 2013, because that's when we started discussing building the fire station using the capital stabilization funds. And so, Mr. Bell was correct, and back in 2013, Reinhardt Associates indicated that it was $7.5 million for a new fire, a new police station, and that would be, if you inflate that, you'd be up in the $9 million. The only problem was that that $7.5 million was tied to a 21,000-square-foot building, not 11,000 square feet. So if you think about, you know, lowering that cost back then, putting in perspective inflation over the last five years, probably $4.9 million to $5 million is not a bad number, if you're looking at half the size of the building. So I think that's something we want to consider, you know, you can do estimates, and we've been doing this for the last, you know, eight years, trying to decide how to build our buildings in this town, when 10 years ago, we couldn't, you know, build a doghouse, quite honestly. And so I think, you know, we're on target, and, you know, it satisfied me that, you know, that $7.5 million for a 21,000-square-foot building is probably, you know, in that $5 million range for half the size of a building today. Thank you.
See no other movement to the mics, we will now move to vote on Part D. This requires a two-thirds vote. So all votes in favor of Part D signify by a standing aye.
Aye!
All votes opposed. The ayes have it, so go to your members. [applause] Chief Dufule?
Sorry. I just want to make a review of the vote. The panelists are just going to keep a little bit obvious, making much less of a difference in the way the police station is I can't speak to this, we, 21,000 square feet, obviously that's a lot of money, I can't speak to 10,000 square feet, but I can tell you that we're going to work together to come up with what we need for this town, instead of money flies. Thank you.
Moving on to Article 6.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I think I need a motion. Somebody from the Community Preservation Committee, you think it's more than a resurgence? No, you can make it. That's right, that's right. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approved Article 6 as set forth in the warrant.
Motion has been made, seconded in discussion. Mr. Malowski, what else?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'm going to go through these parts. Part A is the annual appropriation, this is typical what you see at our annual town meetings, where the CPC committee allocates money to the four categories, I'm sorry, the three categories that it's required to do, which is open space, community housing, and historic reserves. And that is, and they have to do a percentage of 15% into each one of those categories, which if you look at the $58,252, that is the 15% that's projected. What you have in Part A is an administrative cost, and then what you have in the reserve Part A is the $350,000. That's the number that is, the committee has agreed to fund a 10-year bond to bond this project at $350,000 per year. So that is what our operation budget would look like for the CPC. The next item, Part B. Now, Part B is really important, because we've already talked about this in the Capital Outlay. And when the town approved the elementary school, the CPC came forward and agreed to spend, I believe it was $1.9 million, on doing the recreation component to that elementary school. This will create a recreation complex for all the little kids in town, with the two softball fields, basketball court, and you saw up there, a bunch of the playground apparatus that you're going to have out there. However, as part of that $1.9 that was authorized by the committee, they paid half of that out of cash, and they wanted to bond the other $1 million. Well, the last two years, we haven't really done any large CPC projects, so as a result of that, we actually have the cash, if you will, sitting in our account. So what Part B does is basically you're rescinding the million-dollar debt authorization, again, eliminating the credit card balance, and then paying that out of cash, which is the $791,000 that's sitting in the unreserved account. Now, I want to point out that that actually number has come down by well over $140,000, based upon the cost savings that the committee has done in developing that elementary school project. So that's Part B. Part C is to move forward with funding the total project and authorizing the borrowing of $2.925 million to do the track field, and as well as the football, the track, and the whole sports complex arena that needs to be done. Now, that $2.925 million is the amount that is proposed to be borrowed, but there is also an additional $300,000 sitting in the reserve account, that again, we always want to use our cash first before we borrow money, why pay interest on something that we've already have in our account? So that's where you, when you add those two numbers, you get to the $3.225 million, which is the CPC's contribution to this project. Part D is money that we had in free cash. So free cash was our second article that we spent a lot of time on tonight. In that article, we've reserved 831,000, wait a minute, I'm on the next slide, sorry. There we go. Part D, the bottom third of the screen behind me, is the remaining $831,000 in free cash, which would then come back and give us the amount of money that we need to build this project, at about $4.1 million, just under $4.1 million. Now, what I want to do is kind of go into the next slide, which gives a little history of the CPA, and the funds that have been generated by the CPA. So in the top section is your 10-year summary. And in that 10-year summary, we've received about $2.4 million in state matching funds. So basically, for every dollar that's been put into the CPA program, we've received 59 cents. So we're basically getting 60 cents on a return on investment for every dollar that we've been having in that program. In the yellow, it kind of looks at what happened in the future, that the committee asked, if they're going to devote $350,000 a year to debt service in this going forward, which is the bond cost in the red, what is the funds they're going to have left over at the end of the year? And you see that in the two green numbers, which amounts to, over the 10 years, they'll still have about $3 million to use for other projects over that timeframe. So this is a huge project, no one's trying to deny it's not a huge project, but it also still allows some additional money for the CPC to use on special projects that may come up. And again, this is all forecast, with some conservative estimates on what that return's going to be from the state, which we do anticipate we may not get in the future 59 cents on the dollar. We're actually, to be conservative, we're proposing In the yellow, it kind of looks at what happened in the future, that the committee asked, if they're gonna devote $350,000 a year to debt service in this going forward, which is the bond cost in the red, what is the funds they're gonna have left over at the end of the year? And you see that in the two green numbers, which amounts to over the 10 years, they'll still have about $3 million to use for other projects over that timeframe. So, this is a huge project. No one's trying to deny it's not a huge project, but it also still allows some additional money for the CPC to use on special projects that may come up. And again, this is all forecast, with some conservative estimates on what that return's gonna be from the state, which we do anticipate we may not get in the future 59 cents on the dollar. We're actually, to be conservative, we're proposing that we might only get 20 cents on the dollar. We believe it's gonna be significantly higher on that, but we wanted to show you a conservative estimate just to demonstrate that there will be money available to move forward, which is what the CPC, some say CPA, used when they voted to move forward with this project. What I'd like to do is, in a second, bring up Superintendent Neef to introduce the, our consultants that have put this together. But the one piece that I want to mention before he does that is, this committee's been working for a while in looking at different scenarios. And in that, we originally had budgets that were well over $5 million, and the committee's been, you know, just like we do with all of our projects in town, it's figure out what the town can afford to satisfy the needs that we have. And we don't really build any luxury, you know, Cadillac versions here. We're building a good, solid product that's gonna last for a while, and again, this can all be done within the tax base. So, with that, Mr. Neef?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity for me to speak on this project and the new job, John Richard and Ben Lees, and Matt Tivatoss, on Project Outlay. The current track and field for middle high schools are needed in significant repair. The track is significantly deteriorated and really is unsafe. At this time, the school is not able to host trackings based on the condition of the track. The press box is also in a state of disrepair and unsafe structure. I know you've all seen the press box out there. It's at a point where it really not, it really can't be used anymore. Football field has severe drainage issues. The reality is, this is, it's tied to the facility to be upgraded needs and so that. Last year, the town meeting allocated $280,499 to Community Preservation to complete a feasibility study to replace the track and field. So, we did set up a committee to do that, it's a field study committee. The members of that committee were Dave Seaton Tom, Mary Ross, Andrew Salvoa, Michael Milosek, Gary Garrettson, Michael Schultz, and myself. We began meeting in September of last year. As Michael said, the committee reviewed a range of law into the site. We worked effectively with our designer, I call it that, developed the goals that meets the needs of the community and its cost type of field. We evaluated ranges of uses of the facility by the school, by the recreation department, by townwide sports, and have determined the number of proposed usages in the field by the school and the community supports the building and its turf field. Like I said, the original process, which the project came in at over $5.4 million, we're going to reduce the costs, present the proposal tonight for $4,567,360. The work of the committee culminated with a pulpit carry on the project that was a joint meeting of the Field Study Committee and the Community Preservation Committee. This project provided a great complex for our kids, who also provided a great complex for the entire town and community. And we really focused on that as a field study committee, thought about that a lot, that this is, this is not the middle high school's track and field. It's the community of Cowra's track and field. And I was committed to that as a superintendent of the County Public Schools. Even in terms of naming, when we started looking at design features, we were really focused on everything in the field was gonna say Cowra, nothing is gonna say Cowra. Because we want to emphasize that point, it's not the track and field of Cowra Middle High School, it's the track and field of the Cowra community. A new track and field will certainly be an asset, provide great opportunities for our student athletes. But it's also a space that I'm committed to have residents of Cowra have the opportunity to access. So, with that being said, at this time, if we can please log in, if the town allows, we'd like to allow John Richard and Ben Lees, quite to pass, will give us a brief overview of the details of the project to that.
These two gentlemen are not from, not from the town. Is there any objection to them speaking? Hearing none?
Yes, thank you. Moderator, members of the town meeting, my name is John Richard of MacTivatoss. We're the design firm that designed for the proposed track and field project. Here is my presentation, I know I say this late. As you can see, the slide above shows the existing conditions of the track and field. As part of this project, it's gonna be a full reconstruction of the facility, so as previously noted, press box, bleacher, existing concessions buildings are gonna be demolished. The existing subsoil within the building work will be stripped and either reused on-site or stockpiled on all the soccer fields on the campus and reused over time through the town. And the existing track will be pulverized and reused as base material in the new track, which is built out of asphalt. So, one thing to note, this project includes a new competitor field with sanding rubber infill with a thunder lane path underneath that for added player protection. The current field right now is only wide enough for a minimum-sized soccer field. It's one of the first things we did is we looked at how to widen field to appropriately play soccer at the high school run. So, the existing edge of the side closest to the baseball field, we generally kept where it is. We expanded the field toward the softball fields. So, where the current bleachers are on the hillside, we cut into that slope, there's still a fence between the softball fields and track and protection both ends. By doing that, we're able to get about 210 feet wide for a soccer field, which is appropriate width for high school facilities. The soccer, the field walls can be stretched with football, the field blocking, and the field size is appropriate for the process if the town ever gets to the point of adding that part of the program. The track will still be a six-lane oval, and we've been able to add two lanes to the straightway, so on the lower side of the track, it'll be eight-lane straight, which will help in sprint events and speeding up track events to get kids home and studying sooner. By widening the field, it actually shrinks the length of the track, so we've been able to shift the track and field toward the wetlands, which gives us a little more space between the existing parking lot and the track facility where the concession program is. So, what we were able to do there is write off the parking lot by a drop-off area for about four to five buses, so way teams can drop off their players, connect to park through the parking lot, and so another place to practice and regular use that parents can pick up their kids in that drop-off space. By doing that reconfiguration, we only lost a few spaces in the entire parking lot, which seemed appropriate for, we need on daily basis. We see number three, that'll be the new access to the facility for common use for spectators. One of the concerns was congestion after concessions stand during early coming evening events. So, you see number two above, that will be ambulance access and player access around to the softball field side of the facility, and then the third go to either side depending on the home or the away tent. Between the baseball field and track and field, that's where all spectators seeing the press box will be, there's gonna be about 600 bleacher seats with a raised clock ran for ADA accessibility. You'll notice that number eight is the proposed building location. As part of the project, there's funding for foundations and utilities to that location without the actual construction of the building. So, that will potentially be funded from another source, but we want to make sure to have all the earthwork, all the utility, all the infrastructure in place to make it easier and more effective to build concessions to rest of the building. At the far end of the track runway, there's a small rectangle that's for future storage building for padding and hurdles and other equipment to use in that track. And accordingly, this will have four polearm system LED wires, so we'll have the ability to light the field and have a fence at night. And in the top corner, number six, new state VR scoreboard with a sound system that'll be able to be used by all sports communities.
Thank you. If we could have Mr. Gary Garrettson make a few comments too, who's on the committee?
Thank you, Gary Garrettson, 107 Wareham Street. Last fall, Michael gave me a call and asked me to serve on a committee with the town, and it's, I said, "What for?" And he said, "Well, athletic fields." And I said, "Well, it's been a few years, obviously, since I've been athletics." It's also, though, a few years since when I used to love to play football. We would sculpt the field for rocks before we played. Also, he knows the pride with which a farming community would have for a real turf field by only doing a grass field. I go back to my days knowing Rocky Gomes and the pride that he took in having a wonderfully dressed field that was marvelously done. But in speaking with students who now some work for me and remember the days that they weren't able to play because of the pristine condition that we had, I was so on the squeaky wheel of the committee about convince this guy that we need to have an artificial turf field and that we're gonna be able to do this in a method that is going to be wise to wind up having. Ultimately, I came across, came around because the field is, the utilization of this is for the community. We need to have this available for us. And my grandchildren also convinced me with the amount of athletic scholarships. We want a well-rounded community with a good athletic program that we have the potential to have. We're gonna need a facility similar to this that's gonna be able to be utilized. It broke my heart to think that we would not be able to grow something and have the turf that would be a pride of Cowra, a turf that would be there growing. But this is gonna be a facility that we're going to be able to have our children compete with athletic scholarships and be able to be competitive with any other community. My granddaughter's community just had activists do a field for them, and it, it's the Pram de la Pram, and it really did do, they did a super job on budget. They did what they were supposed to do, and they did it in on time. So, I'd like to think that this committee, talking about it, I was the odd guy out with all of this, but I want, I came out post support of the program to have this. We are going to have world-class buildings, and this will round out the opportunity for our students and our children to be able to give a performance that will be well-rounded. Academically, we're gonna have great buildings inside. Athletically, we're gonna have a wonderful field and program outside, but also the opportunity to use this as a Cowra community is gonna be great, and everything else will reap the benefits from doing this. I still got over the shock of a $5.4 million bid on all of this when we started, except for the town, but we wound up bringing it down, and we do this without having additional tax burdens that are gonna be put onto us. It's, it really is the best of the best project that we will be able to do, utilizing the space and the opportunity to really get the children to be able to use this thing and be able to have the next Patriots quarterback come out of Cowra. So, let's hope so. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on Article Six? Mr. Belton?
I just want to make, I just want to get this correct. How much are we already bonding out of the CPA fund? Anything anymore? Nothing? We're all done with that bonding, so this is gonna be the bond for the next 10 years, $350,000. Okay? So, I just want to get this clear, so everyone knows. This year, we took in, what, about $440,000 from the taxpayers under CPA, and then the state gave us $130,000, roughly right around there. All right, it was like 30%. It's dropped every year, the state money has dropped, but our assessment keeps going up on it. Let you guys know. So, for the other projects that go on in this town, $350,000 is out, that means we're really limited of what we can do for more projects coming down the line, about housing or historic preservation, because a lot of this is coming out of the recreation. So, that 10% is gonna be taken right out of the polls, right? That's what I'm looking here, is 10% is gonna be taken right out of the polls for the recreation automatically, so basically no more recreation, just this, and then the rest is for the other ones. It's really gonna be tough to get out of the recreation, like the projects don't. It's a lot of money. I mean, and the other issue that I had is, last year, I tried to get this million dollars not here to borrow it, and I could call it out of order, it's been funding that now we're not going to get out this time.
Ms. Ma'am?
Christine Kenyon, 41, Cowra, Lindley. I would ask for your vote for this. I have a senior currently, and as a first graduating class up on that stage and playing sports for the Crusaders and for Cowra, and having family and friends who are gonna benefit from this facility, I would just ask for your vote. It's pretty bad when my daughter's senior field hockey game had to be relocated, thankfully to the sportsmanship and the generosity of East Bridgewater, who has charred and was able to play the game. So, I ask you for a yes vote and not a senior picture of a Crusader with a Viking behind her.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes, Roger Schultz, Cowra. I was definitely for this new facility. It's gonna offer more field space for our children, which we don't want them to be home alone. All we can do in terms of getting them engaged in areas where they can be engaged. I know it drives parents nuts driving here, there, and everywhere, but I do have a question. The man will follow up hard. The earth, the present earth under the sod and the field is pretty poor, if I remember right. I did some work out there, working in high school, and I wonder if that subsoil is gonna be replaced. Does anyone? I know it's a slight...
Just very briefly, as part of their evaluation, the engineers went out and did subservice exploration. They used geoprobes and they dig test wells, test pits, so they have a good understanding of what's there. You're right, it's not all perfect, but they've taken that into their design plans.
All right, if that's the case, there's been a lot of people in this community over the years that have donated their time, machines, and things like that. You know, recently, I know the Russell family did a lot of work with, at the fire state, the fire station. I know Dave also, who built those, who have built a lot of baseball fields behind the police state. And what I'm getting at is, if we're gonna remove or replace material, I certainly would hope that we don't have to go by some foolish human rules, that we can use dirt that's low and help the people of the town that way. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Michael Grant, Settler Street. I don't really know how to say this any other way, but we should be embarrassed at the way our facilities look. We should be embarrassed. A lot of the people that I know in this room, and people that I called, and I'm sorry I got you to come all so late, but I've been here since the first athletic director was here, we put the first brick in the ground. It was never supposed to end up like this. We went from the best to the worst. It's embarrassing to bring teams here in youth events. It's disgusting and dangerous to bring teams here in high school events. I'm embarrassed as a taxpayer that we even, I mean, it's great that we happen to tell me to understand the process, but we need to do this, folks. We are, this is for the community, well, then we better get up on it, because I'm telling you right now, we are the worst facility in the South Shore by none.
Okay, seeing no further, to the microphones, we now act on Article Six. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Six signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed. The ayes have it, so go to the ayes.
If I could, just wanted to let everybody know that we will be issuing a notice to proceed tomorrow based upon this vote, and construction activity should take place by May 15th. I also know a lot of people are leaving town meeting, and I understand your personal issues and everything, but we do have a little more business that we'd like to finish before we have to adjourn and go to two nights. So, if you can stay, we'd appreciate it.